Let's call it over. Dan, start with the moment of silence. And the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, it's adopted without objection. Uh, we have any visitors or public forum? We received no visitors or public forum. So we'll move on to the reports. First with the student report.
All right, hello. Um, regarding things that have happened since the last meeting, the boys' basketball team just started their practices two weeks ago. The girls' basketball team had two full weeks of practice, a scrimmage against a few other high school teams, um, and their first game and win against Princeton. This program is also continuing to do Bulldog Days for the third and fourth grade girls with their most recent date being this past Saturday. Um, girls' gymnastics, first meet of the season was very well. They competed eight girls per event and scored a hundred and thirty-three point six points. Um, their team's score should increase as the season progresses, um, and they perfect their routines. With dance, they just had their first two performances and they received the scores of the second one. Um, the team received scores similar to what they had ended with last year at state. Uh, they are currently ranked second in class double A for both kick and jazz, which has never happened before. With robotics, um, we placed first at our last off-season event and hosted a training session here at the high school this past Saturday with over three hundred students, um, from teams all across the state. Uh, yearbook's first page deadline has been sent in with the fall sports and class pictures. The GSA finished picking the designs for their first GSA sweatshirts and other merchandise. Um, the National Honor Society sent students to Craig and State Conference and hosted their first blood drive. Student Council also sent students to Craig and State Conference and competed, or completed their November food drive in the high school. Uh, boys' hockey has had a good start to the season, being two and O so far, and the team is playing better very well. Wrestling began their practices three weeks ago, and drama had its, uh, one of its most successful seasons in a while with this fall's musical Beauty and the Beast reaching record-breaking ticket sales.
And things happening this month. Um, boys' basketball has their first game tomorrow and will have seven games in total this December. Girls' basketball has a challenging schedule for December as they play a lot of good teams and programs, but are looking forward to continuing to work hard and play great competition. Gymnastics has their next home meet on December eighth, and it should be really good competition. Dance will start their actual competitions, competing head-to-head with all of the teams in their section. They will have a total of five competitions in the next month, one of them including a conference meet and their first-ever home invite competition on the seventeenth. Speech's first meeting is on December eighth, where new and old members will meet to discuss this season and information. Their first tournament will be on January fourteenth in Stillwater. Robotics is continuing to prepare for the upcoming season. Yearbook is assigning winter pages to members and they are beginning to work on them. GSA is currently looking into how to manage funds and where their next funds would be coming from. They are also discussing designs for GSA yearbook page. NHS is looking forward to individual service projects surrounding the season, such as delivering gifts to nurses who work over the holidays, coat drives, and hosting dinners. Student Council is moving forward with planning events for the holidays as well as creating merchandise. Boys' hockey has quite a few games coming up in the future, and it'll be a good test for them all. Wrestling has their first competition on Thursday, December eighth, and they have a tournament this weekend on the ninth and tenth in Brainerd. They'll have another tournament on the sixteenth at Glencoe Silver Lake. They also have a try on the twenty-second in Dassel Coquado, and on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, they have a two-day tournament in Rogers. The One Act begins rehearsal this Tuesday with its custom-written show, Thresholds, and is hoping to have a successful season.
Yeah, with that, are there any questions on things going on right now? Kind of, there's a lot. There's a lot.
Did you guys get any attendance numbers for the play?
It was awesome.
Oh, exactly.
On Friday, it was unbelievable.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what the numbers were, but, um, as we kind of said, like, it, it sold more tickets than any other show, like, in Becca Theater history, so.
I'm glad I went on Sunday, but because of that, I didn't get to go see it again.
Right, yeah, right.
It was fantastic.
Thank you, yeah. Are there any other questions?
Um, I know with the dance competitions and stuff like that, they need a lot of volunteers to, to help out, you know, to kind of be able to organize that. Do we see any, any problems or any, have you heard from any of the organizations about getting volunteers for those types of things when we bring groups in?
I guess, well, typically, and that's kind of why we, we allow, like, this platform, um, all of these reports are sent in by individual students who are leaders and representatives within their respective teams or groups. Um, so we're not really saying anything, uh, maybe we could encourage, like, if, we'd also like to say, like, if you guys need anything or are requesting anything, like, you can also say that through us, and they, they didn't really say that, but Amelia, do you have anything to chime in with that?
I haven't heard anything from, so I haven't heard anything, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I also know that at least one of the art students is helping out, um, at the, with the Legion and painting the flag in the, in the Legion Hall, stuff like that. So I'd like to see, and that's great involvement in the community and that outreach, so, uh, appreciate those. So I know that there are some individual things that might be happening out there too.
Sure.
That, uh, you know, I, I think that if we can get that kind of stuff of what's going on from the student body, I mean, I see that quite a bit. Um, and then I'm just gonna say, remind me at the end, I'd like to talk to one of you guys at the end of, uh, the meeting tonight, uh, about the oratorical contest that the American Legion holds. Um, it's a, it's a contest that they have to give some speeches, but, um, last year, there was nobody that represented the, basically, the middle of the state, it's called, the, the Legion's sixth district. And there are scholarship boards for these not insignificant ones, like five thousand dollar, ten thousand dollar scholarships that are out there by participating in those, in those programs.
Sure.
So just remind me, I'll talk to.
Okay, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, thank you. Is there anything else, any other questions? Okay.
Any else? Nobody. Okay, superintendent's report.
Uh, the MSBA conference, I think this is the third or fourth time I've had this on here, but January twelfth and thirteenth at Minneapolis College Center. Um, everyone's registered unless you told Angel you weren't able to attend, so if things change or whatever, can't make it, um, please let Angel know as soon as.
Everybody gone for at least one day, hopefully?
I'm out of town, you can tell.
You're, you are going, and you're not. Well, but I actually do want you to go, 'cause, um, one of the things we're planning is to have that, uh, school board dinner that we, that we normally have, and it's best to do that as part of that, so that Thursday evening, we'll have, uh, our school board dinner, if you're able to make it.
I'd like to.
And, and you don't need, one of the things about this, this conference, you don't need to attend the whole thing. If you can make parts of it, we don't pay anything for you to attend. So it's good education, it's, it's good information for everybody, so.
Uh, the January meeting, I'm recommending, and it's lower on the agenda as well, uh, January ninth, uh, for the January first Monday and January organizational meeting, due to the second being the observed holiday for New Year's Day. Um.
Do we make the meeting, the motion to set that organization meeting, or is it just?
I think it's just informational, you know, we just.
Just call.
It's just set, yeah.
This is our.
The first Monday, right, unless it's a holiday, which it is this year, and, okay.
Uh. Let's see. Related to that, I want, so January second, uh, just, I just want to get this out there. We sent out a notice to families, but, uh, January second on our calendar that was approved is, was a, a school day, uh, but MSBA sent out a notice probably about, just over a month ago now, um, that we aren't able to have school on that, that date, and so we're gonna count that as our first snow day, uh, or school cancellation day, really. And so any other school cancellation days that we have this year will be e-learning days until we get to the maximum of five, and then we'll have to come back to this table and, uh, readjust the calendar if we, if we need to, so. Um, and again, parents were emailed that, I don't know, a week and a half ago, maybe. The transportation department has been approved on phase one and phase three of the, uh, bus camera grants. Uh, we're in the process of purchasing the equipment for that, uh, to install cameras, four cameras on each school bus. Um, Tom Rizley is participating in workshops that are required for the grant, and so those are for violations of stop-arm violations, uh, which we are required to report now, which we were required to report before, but, uh, we have to do them, I think, within four hours of a stop-arm violation, and the police will immediately investigate as soon as we send those out. People can get fined for violating stop-arm violations, um, with the cameras there, so. Um, but we'll have those on every bus, um, soon, and some of them already have them. Uh, the cabinet, which consists of directors, administrators, and department leadership, participated in a workshop, uh, last Wednesday uh, with the author of a book called Home Run Leadership, um, Dave Webb. Dr. Dave Webb has, uh, provided two-hour training for us, uh, a simple four-step decision-making model. Uh, the book was, is pretty simple to read, and he's been helping out with that. Uh, he just, just released a book within the last year. Um, we were the first cabinet that, that brought him in, so he did the two-hour training for us, um, for free, so that was a, added benefit, and it was a really good, I, I thought it was really good. Kevin participated in it as well, and, um, um, just a good, good way for our, our leadership team to, to continue to build and grow. Uh, we held a new board member orientation, uh, Monday, November twenty-eighth. Uh, it was a good time to get some introduction, key policies, information about the school was all shared during that time. Uh, and we had four, four participants, semi-new and then new, uh, people, so, um, but it, I thought it was really good, and it was, it worked out better having four instead of just the two there. The two new board members we have are, are born and raised in Becker, and so they have a lot of really good knowledge about the community and, and school. Uh, the calendar committee, I've been, I think I talked about that a couple, couple of board meetings ago. Um, we're currently waiting, I have a survey created for, uh, staff and then the calendar committee, um, but we're waiting on potential delays in construction, um, due to some permits and then some things we're working with the city on, um, which may, may delay the start of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Is there an update on the communication that we've received recently in regards to the study? Have we made comments or?
We, we received, uh, the study back, or the results, but when was it last?
Week, ten days ago, I think.
Last, last week. Yeah, it was, I think it was last, that might have been last Wednesday, Tuesday.
I just know there was a lot of back and forth in relation to the traffic study delays, and I know ICS has been going back and forth, you've been going back and forth. I'm just curious if, now, are we to the point now where we've submitted our, so we're, I think December nineteenth was the planning?
Is, is the, yeah, is the public meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
And then ten, within ten days after that, uh, or ten days after that, we'll get the results of, of that. The feedback from the engineer on the, on the, uh, transfer, uh, what is it, transportation study I got? Um, included some, some signage that we need to do and some painting, um, that we need to do in, and then educating those that are picking up and dropping off, so. Um, that's essentially what the engineer brought back, and then we'll have their public comment on it, and then we'll be able to proceed from there.
I don't know what to say about this, other than, I mean, public entities, government, is mandated to follow a least burdensome approach, and that has not been the approach that this is, that this has taken. We have people that live outside of our community causing delays, which is, and, and asking for studies, that many of us would look at and say, "That's common sense. Why do you need a study to tell you something that's common sense?" And I've had this discussion with some of the people in the city, I know you have, there's other people that have been talking to people in the city. Um. It's kind of water under the bridge at this point, but I think the public deserves to know that there's been delays that were unnecessary, and, you know, that because there's people that don't, you know, there's been a lot of changeover at the city in their staffing and that kind of stuff, and so they maybe are trying to follow the rules too closely and not following the least burdensome approach.
The biggest hangup that I've had in this process or learning of this process is, is the whole conditional youth permit process in itself. We've gone through how many projects, and it wasn't an issue?
Exactly.
And today, or this project, it became an issue. At what point does that become a precedent, or a loophole, or whatever, to get this across the finish line? And I guess, not, again, water under the bridge, but I hope the other projects that are going on within the city limits is going through the same scrutiny that we're going through.
Yeah, those are all concerns we've, I've shared, and maybe some of you have shared as well, so.
Well, what I found interesting is when you sent out the email, include, included us in the email, it couldn't have been twenty-four or forty-eight hours before there was a response back. So I guess if that's the way that we need to continue to do things, then, you know, somebody needs to be all accountable over there. I'm happy that we're not behind schedule on it, but it very well could have gotten to that point, so.
I think we're still possibly there.
Yeah, well, that's what, you know, we're waiting on, that's what, kind of started this, is the calendar committee, just looking on that to see if, if we do need to start later.
I'm personally fine with you sending out any more continued emails from the city, yeah, because, like I said, it.
Well, and for sure, it costs us money to have to do the study, pay for the engineering resources, all of those types of things. And so it's costing the taxpayers money to fulfill a taxpayer requirement.
Right.
You know, there's some common sense things here that should have happened that didn't happen, and I think it's, again, because there's some new people in their jobs, they don't understand all of the requirements, so they're going to the letter of the law rather than trying to think about what's really necessary, what's the risk, all of those types of things.
Well, it's frustrating to me to see other construction projects steam forward, and we're waiting for a piece of paperwork to come across again.
Yes.
And do we know how much that traffic study cost?
I don't know.
I don't know.
It was rolled into.
They'll, they haven't filled it yet.
Cause I'm.
It was through the construction.
It won't be itemized on there, will it?
Yeah, they'll, they'll have it.
I'm interested in knowing that, because that's, yeah, something that wasn't expected, and I don't know that there's a return on investment.
And so that's why, I mean, what I really want to ask is that all of these signs and the education and repainting, those are not really related to what we're doing as far as an ECFE center and all that kind of stuff. These are related to the things that already exist around the intermediate school and the primary school for pickup and drop-off. There, there's nothing that's changed about that, and so the thing, even the things that they're asking for are legacy things that they're now trying to attach to this project, which they don't belong to.
Plus the signage, who is going to enforce the signage? If it's on a city, a public road, is that our job to police it? Is it the city? I, I don't know.
I don't know how we would enforce it, how we would.
We don't have a.
No, we can't.
But, but I would argue, they could very easily try and say our SRO is responsible for doing it, which we could push back. I would argue that if we're within the city limits, that is back to PD's.
In a city street?
Right.
We don't fix the city streets, so, yeah, because, I mean, I've, yeah, I've gone around and around with that.
But, I mean, this is, and it happens, I mean, guys, it happens to homeowners too, right? You have to, you have to fix your septic tank when you go to get a permit. When you have this legacy thing of going on and on and on. I understand some of that happens, but. We had to use some common sense in these things, that least burdensome approach is required of government. So let's follow those signs. All right, sorry, we're kind of.
Well, there's a calendar survey coming to staff soon and, and, uh, calendar committee, which I think Aaron is on, and he's still on. Um, then my last one, uh, congratulations to Chair Swanson. Uh, he was recognized by MSBA as a presidential award winner, um, which means he completed more than three hundred hours of attendance at MSBA-sponsored, uh, meetings and activities, so. Here is a luncheon, he's.
Been busy, somebody else needs to take it over.
One of, one of fifteen board members throughout the state to, to receive that honor, so that's a big deal.
Thank you.
And I don't know if this is the best spot for this, but thank you to, uh, to Chair Swanson and, um, Board Clerk Obermiller uh, for your service as well, um, what do you, twelve years, I think?
Twelve years for me and.
One term, four years.
Four years for you, yeah, so, thank you for that, I was gonna put it at the end, but I figured it works to throw it in.
We can do it.
Thank you. All right, um, activity reports. You want to do the special ed one?
Well, we don't have any, we just, there's a special ed, uh, Sherbrooke Northern Wright Special Ed Co-op meeting, uh, Wednesday at six, it got moved, six thirty.
We had another meeting in between, though, didn't we approve a full-time? We didn't actually have a meeting, maybe.
It ought to be on there, yeah, yeah, we'll put it on the meeting.
There's some staffing changes happening for the special ed because of some, um.
Move-ins.
Move-ins and, and so forth. They're gonna need to hire some additional full-time staff. Um, in my opinion, I, I think the special ed co-op working with, um, Monticello and Big Lake is way better than what we were in before. Um, you know, we were just kind of the small, one of the small districts, you know, St. Michael and, and others in there. Now I feel like it's more of a sharing of responsibilities, and they're very responsive to what's, what the needs are. Um, and so I, I feel like specialized moving forward. Um, I don't, this is, I'm just gonna invite, you know, if one of you plans on taking this over, um, you know, beginning in January, you can certainly attend the meeting on Wednesday at six P.M., um, so if you're, if anybody's available. But the special ed co-op needs, we, one board member and each of the other two districts needs one board member, um. Moving that forward, so. We've been the clerk, we've been the clerk the last terms, so. So, and it rotates between districts where we actually need, so last time we met in Monticello, this time it'll be in Big Lake. Any questions? Uh, Aaron, you had a negotiation?
Uh, yes, we are in negotiations with district office. Um, the five secretaries there have recently become, uh, you, uh, unit, I guess you could say, a union.
One question.
Yeah. According to Minnesota's.
Bureau of Mediation.
Bureau of Mediation, so we are in the process of meeting with them, and we're kind of building a contract and language around what they need for their jobs and all that. We've met twice, um, it's gone well. A lot of education at hand as far as their jobs and what they do and, and how the pay goes, so. So it's moving ahead, seems to be going well, um.
Lots of different jobs in that five-person group.
Lots of different jobs in that five-person group, right, yeah, so it's going well.
Okay.
Activities, Tom?
So we had an activities meeting, um, on Monday, November twenty-eighth. Um, we talked about bleacher captains, which I had never heard of, um, but they're kind of in the beginning stages of doing these bleacher captains, which, um, students would be watching over some of the cheering and, you know, kind of trying to police that a little bit, if you will. Um, so they're trying to figure out how to nominate students, or, you know, it's gonna be a kind of a tough position to build, if, you know, kids don't want to be.
A bad person.
Yeah, yeah, so, so they're, um, looking at different ways to, um, kind of entice people to want to do that, like free admission to home and away events and, and, um, stuff like that, so. So that, there was a discussion on that. Um, we also went through all the activities that, uh, were wrapping up for the season, such as volleyball, football, soccer, swimming, um, cross-country, so that, that was, um, gone through. And then, um, talked about, uh, music, uh, musical for the middle school. They're starting Newsies, and they've got sixty students performing or being ready to perform for that. And then finally, the activities office, they're always looking for people to volunteer to help with events, and so I just kind of want to get that out there, uh, supervisors, ticket sellers, table workers, um, things like that. So if you're interested, I think it's, um, is it Tracy O'Neil, I think, is the one to talk to.
And those are paid positions?
Yep. I believe so.
Yes, there.
Yep, so that's kind of what we talked about.
With the bleacher captains being new, are we concerned with our students' activities at home and away games? I mean, the game, uh, the activities I've gone to, it's, I mean, I think it, a lot of our cheers are all in good spirit and good humor, or, I mean, is there an issue that we're trying to isolate or get under control, or?
From what I understand, it's just to kind of head it off at the pass.
More proactive.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think we're having issues, but I think it's kind of a Mississippi Eight thing.
Okay.
Um, so it's kind of just everybody.
So it wasn't something that we, this was coming either from a conference or somewhere higher asking us to.
Yeah, this is, so the Mississippi Eight, um, meets, the Eighties meet more regularly, but the superintendent's meet twice a year, and we talked about this at, at our meetings last year. Uh, it's, it's kind of a result of some of those things you've seen on the news from some of the other schools and, and things. Um, but just having a bleacher captain or somebody that can, um, kind of oversee some of that, or just lead the cheers in a positive direction, um, those types of things, uh, and making sure, you know, we don't expect a kid to come out of the crowd and kick an adult out of, of anything, but just trying to set a good example, be a role model. Uh, I think they were gonna try to get a shirt or something special for them, or some different things, and so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's conference-wide, we're trying to.
I mean, I can applaud the efforts to be proactive, I just was curious if we had had, I mean, I'd like to think, for the most part, our student body is pretty much well-behaved and respectful for, for the most part. I mean, I know football games or cheers can sometimes get, you know, aggressive, if you, if you want to call it that, but for, for the most part, I mean, basketball, wrestling, the ones I've gone to, our student body seems to be, you know, better, supportive, and, and positive.
I know from, like, the perspective of somebody who's in the audience with those cheers, it hasn't really been an issue, but, um, a group of us were actually sent down to Sauk Rapids, like, two months back, I think, um, and we participated in something called World Cafe Discussion, where, um, we discussed with, like, other students from around the area, like, central Minnesota, um, if it had have been an issue at their schools, and a lot of them had said that yes. Like, their, their schools kind of had fallen off and had gone into kind of more vulgar and, and gross cheers that were given out at their own sports competitions, but not really ours as much.
Okay.
But you can't do that chant, that's still okay? Okay, good. That's my favorite chant. We do that at home.
All right. Uh, all right, any other questions or comments on activities? Uh, curriculum committee met, we met just before our meeting here. Um, so the world's best workforce report has been completed and is posted. Um, I'll just say that there are many challenges outlined there. Um, that, uh, several of the goals had not met, um, but we're working towards, uh, some improvements. COVID definitely had an effect on our academic progress, um, and that's evident in the test scores. Um, one of the things that we had talked about a couple of years ago, and I brought it back to Troy, is, um, and we talked about it briefly at our, at our meeting, is discovering meas, some measures for school quality that are beyond just the test scores. Uh, do people like coming to school? Do, you know, people believe that we have a, a quality school, a quality organization? Um, and the test scores, particularly with the, the effects that have happened with COVID, with the changes in the numbers of free and reduced lunches, all of those types of things, sometimes the data gets skewed for those test scores, and so finding better ways to measure the quality of our school might be, um, something that gets considered in the future. Um, this next year, uh, and, and coming up in, in the next couple of months, is the curriculum review for the science curriculum. Um, reminder that, uh, so there was four vendors, I don't remember how much she said. Yep, she's, she's not in it, but four vendors, I'm like, she's out there somewhere. Uh, yeah, so we had four vendors that have been selected, um, for the, to be part of the review for the, the science, providing the science curriculum. Um, and so those pieces will be, um, looked at here in the, over the next few months, and then a recommendation, um, uh, for which curriculum to be purchased, um, coming after that. Keep in mind, many of the, much of the science. Keep in mind, many of the, much of the science requirements are changing and, um, many of us may not like some of those pieces, um, because it's less about recall, uh, and fact recalls, and more about the ability of them to apply the science in, um, you know, in a way that makes sense.
Yeah, it's like there's a lot of changes really, coming through the, the way we discussed it.
Am I missing? Yeah, we're in on, okay.
The grade level changes you talked about, the, the standard.
Yeah, so that's, what that's causing to some of the, some of the curriculum is moving between grade levels, that's again why we need to evaluate purchasing a different curriculum, all sorts of things.
Yeah.
And so, and of course, they'll be training the teachers and all that kind of stuff. Okay. Uh, and the last piece I have to kind of highlight is, um, we started the review of the achievement and integration plan, so we have a plan that takes us through twen, into twenty twenty-three, uh, year, into next year, so next year we'll have to adopt a new, uh, plan that'll be a three-year plan, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. Um, so that'll move forward, um.
Go ahead. Yeah, there was a lot of good discussion on that, too, on the, the achievement integration plan, so I think we got a good start on it, you know, and heading down the right path.
Questions about curriculum committee? Okay. Uh, finance?
Uh, we met on Thursday, um, the, our annual financial audit has been completed and our auditor is actually here to give us the results of that audit here in a little bit later down in our meeting.
Okay. Anything else, any other comments? Looking forward to the audit? Everybody likes the numbers? I know facilities didn't meet, but, and we could have already had a little bit of a discussion about that, um, but progress is moving forward on the bus garage, so that, it's broken ground and that's moving forward. Also, the middle so, middle school and high school projects are moving forward.
Yep, yep, those have been approved and they're, uh, once we hit March, uh, we'll be really, really kicked into gear. Uh, the facilities committee will start meeting monthly here, probably in January, maybe February, um, the week before this meeting, so, um, I don't know if it's on this agenda or not, but somewhere we'll have.
The curriculum meeting?
Yeah, it's on here, so if you look at it, number, I did, agenda item number twelve has a listing of the committee meetings, um, for the next calendar year, and facilities is on there, and so we'll, we'll start meeting now that we're kind of getting into the, the big, big decisions and, and things like that, once they start building stuff, and more than just the transportation.
So, anything else? What's going on? I know people are always interested in kind of what's going on, if, if anybody's driven by the land outside of town, you can see it's pretty much cleared away and, and moving forward.
Yeah, still framing that there, man. Yeah. It's probably, I haven't been there in a week and a half, but, uh, they probably have the outside shell on already, or I think.
Okay.
Since before Thanksgiving, but I think those will be delivered Thanksgiving week, and I assume they put them up last week.
The goal was to have the shell up so they could continue to work inside during the winter.
And, uh, just helpful, you can look from the road, please don't drive onto the site and that kind of stuff, you, without the proper authorizations. Uh, that's all I have listed for community reports, are there any other ones? Okay. Uh, move forward to the consent agenda.
Move to accept.
Okay, and move to accept the consent agenda items, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Okay, any items for discussion? Here and then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the gifts, item four?
No motion of.
Aaron, moves to approve, is there a second? Second by Connie. Uh, any discussion on the gifts?
Smaller list, but still appreciative of our vendors, or our community and our, our businesses and individuals coming through. Baseball, I saw on there, and some just general, general activity donation.
And, and overall, this community support, so, um, I know that the archery club had the distribution of pizzas, and we were there for several hours down at the, at the league and distributing pizzas and pushing that stuff out. So, although that kind of stuff doesn't show up on here as gifts, I mean, it, it's appreciative of the community support, uh, all of those things.
Robotics just had their salt dropped, too.
That's right. Okay.
Good question on the Lions Club, how come it's, um, pound signed it out?
Yeah, I was noticing that, I was trying to, I, I thought, it, it must've, must've, the column must've got shrunk, yeah.
So, that's a good problem. It's a, it's a bigger number.
More than, more than three numbers anyway, so.
I believe from the Lions Club it was ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand?
I believe so.
Wow.
That's pretty nice.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any other comments? All in favor of accepting the gifts, signify by, by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item six?
Five.
I'm sorry, five, is the, again, approval of the school board election, special election results, um, although we, you know, just preface this, um, uh, let's get a motion to approve that, that.
So moved.
Okay, a second?
Seconded.
Okay, so just a comment on that, um, I mean, we sort of did our canvassing at the last board meeting, um, but we didn't have the quote-unquote official transcript of the results, so this brings the transcript of those results into, um, into our records, um, and canvassing those returns, um, so we have that out the piece, and that's the whole purpose of this, um, this motion, okay?
And the numbers were the same.
Nothing changed.
Yeah.
That's always good.
Yeah.
So, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item six is the resolution authorizing the issuance of election certificates based on those results, and having the clerks sign all of the, all the paperwork. Now, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item seven is the world's best workforce summary that we just talked about, um, when I gave the curriculum committee report in, uh, adopting this, um, and, and posting it. Uh, I'll move the adoption of that report.
I'll second.
And seconded by Ryan. Okay, discussions or questions? Again, this is, and it's not no child, that's the time before, it's, what's, what's the, the federal law now, it's the? The, every child. Every student succeeds that, essa. Uh, I'm sorry, and, and those types of things, that, this is the Minnesota equivalent of, you know, providing that, and we have to provide that publicly.
Yeah, and I know Mark mentioned it, but I just say, when you look at those numbers, you gotta, there's a ton of variables in those numbers on what's coming to play there. COVID is a major one, there's also the opt-out, I mean, our opt-out rate went up significantly and that impacts, um, the calculations, and the free and reduced lunch, you know, I think we said almost doubled, so that also affects those calculations, so just keep that in mind when you look at the numbers, it's kind of hard to do comparisons year to year.
At this point, it's hard to do it year to year, and the idea here is to just continue to improve and continue to look for opportunities to move that tick forward and improve, um, and that's what the, the, the achievement and integration plan talked to and moving those things forward, so that, that'll be continued work of the board and, and others. Any other discussion? All in favor of adopting the report, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and we're up to our audit.
Not mine, uh, our auditor, Nancy Schulzenberg, uh, will present information, once Jeremy gets it up on the screen.
Yep, I need to connect, hard way to connect. When I get the old computer, Kevin, Kevin, yours probably has the H D M I on.
Nope. They all need, they all need.
Need the speed adapter.
It is on the board book, so we'll, we'll just follow that, so if you're on, so if everyone's on board book, you can follow along that way. Yeah, go ahead.
So, you have the PowerPoint in front of you, all of you do?
Yeah, if, if they're on board book. And if you're not logged in on board book, you can go through our website to, uh, the board book and, and access it that way, so.
Okay, all right, we'll get started then, and just raise your hand if you're not following along, or if I'm losing you in the, in the process, since I can't see what you're looking at. Um, so, thank you for giving me some time tonight to go over the results of our audit for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Um, I'm gonna start out talking a little bit about all of the communications that we issue as part of the audit, and the most important communication is gonna be the independent auditor's report, and you will find that letter in the front of the financial statement document, it houses the opinion, which is, um, our biggest responsibility as auditors. So, we're issuing an unmodified opinion, which is the best that we can offer, indicates that everything is fairly stated based on the results of the audit. Moving on then to the next slide, um. We do issue several other communications, first of all, a report in accordance with government auditing standards, and these standards are required for all school districts across the state of Minnesota, and they require us as your auditors to look closer at internal controls and also compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grants.
Can you just hold on, hold on just a second?
I apologize, the, the PowerPoint is not on the books, on our board book, this is the actual documents are.
Okay.
The official one.
That might be a little bit harder to follow along, but you have the financial statement document back of it, um, probably around page eighty-something?
Okay.
Where those letters are, but I can just talk you through them, too, if that works.
All right, thank you.
Um, so, based on those government auditing standards, we do have one internal control finding, it is the lack of segregation of accounting duties, not new for Becker, not at all in common for a district of your size. We, as auditors, have three different levels of findings, that, um, we rate findings, if that's a good terminology, and that lack of segregation falls in the middle level. So, less than a material weakness, but does still warrant some attention by you all as the governing board. Then, uh, because of the significance of federal funds that you received as a district this past year, we performed what is called a single audit, so this is where.
Turn your mic on.
Oh, it is on, isn't it? I think it's on.
Okay.
Can you guys hear her? I, I can't hear her through the mic.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's not working? You can hear that?
Maybe you just gotta get closer to it.
Okay. So, can they hear me, like, out and about in the world?
That's what I'm checking.
Okay. Okay, I'll keep going. All right, so, um, back to the single audit, so we tested two programs for Becker this year, the education stabilization fund and also the child nutrition program, and based on the work that we did on the compliance, we're issuing an unmodified opinion on compliance, again, the best that we can offer, and then we also had no internal control findings as it relates to that compliance. So, a clean federal report, and then our last official letter is in accordance with Minnesota legal compliance, and this comes to us from the Office of the State Auditor of Minnesota, it covers seven broad categories of legal compliance, and based on our work there, we did also not find anything of note, uh, to report. Then we have a separate document, which is the communications letter, and in there you will find the financial analysis that we'll cover tonight. There are several pages titled required communication, these are things that our standards require us to put in writing to the governing body of the organization, and it is our tool if we had anything significant that we uncovered, any, uh, anything unusual, any disagreements with management, anything like that, happy to report that nothing's straight from our standard language in that section. And then finally, in the back of that document, there is a legislative summary and also some emerging issues, new accounting standards coming in the next several years, exciting stuff. All right, it looks like we're on track and we're on the big screen. I'm on page, slide four, there we go. All right, so moving into the financial analysis then, taking a look at, uh, general education aid as your largest funding source, and what you see on this slide is the basic formula allowance. We give you quite a bit of history, just to kind of set the stage for the minimal increases that you have received for general education aid, and if you key into twenty twenty-two, that is the largest increase with, uh, two and a half percent versus, um, two percent that you've been receiving and two percent that you are receiving in fiscal twenty-three. Student counts, um, are the other part of the calculation of general education aid with that basic formula allowance, so we have several charts and graphs to take a look at those student counts in a, in a lot of different ways. So, starting with your residence, so the first portion of the chart on this slide takes you through the residents in the district of Becker, so these are the kiddos that live within your boundaries and attend a public or charter school, um, not necessarily attending at Becker, but, uh, a public or charter school. So, if you look at that number, um, it's stable, uh, when you go back five years, decreasing about thirty-five for fiscal twenty-two. And then the very bottom line is the adjusted A D M, so this does factor in open enrollment and other arrangements to get you the number of students served, and that number was down a little bit less, uh, at twenty-one students. And the graph on the next page takes a look at that same information in that graphical format, so you can see the relative stability with an overall downward trend in the residents for Becker. We take those residents and the open enrolled students and, uh, apply weighting factors to get to the numbers that general education aid is actually calculated based on, and that's what you see, actually, one slide back, Jeremy. Nope, in between there. It looks blank, okay. Somewhere that's, they're falling off, but what we have here is the chart that, that factors in the open enrollment, so overall, the students that you served on a weighted basis decreased by twenty-four, and is less than the decrease in the weighted residents, uh, forty-two, because of the changes in open enrollment. So, last year you had a net gain of four hundred and six students, and this year that net gain was four hundred and twenty-three students. And the graph that you see on the next slide, um, does show you both adjusted A D Ms and adjusted P U Ms are the weighted numbers. So, again, relative stability when you look at the five-year picture, which makes things easier for budgeting and planning. All right, so then we have a budget to actual chart, and it doesn't look like these must have come through, do you? I apologize, um, might be best if you open the communications letter if you do wanna follow along.
I got it.
Okay.
Again, I got the older computer under the deal.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
All right, so this is the budget to actual result, yeah.
One quick question, i- in regards to the state aid where it's talking about two, 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 one and a half, two and a half, all of that, is there any reporting order that gives what the true percentage is, factoring in cross-up? Cause we've talked before that if the state gives us two, but based on free and reduced and everything else, we don't really get two percent. So, is there, not necessarily part of the auditing function, but transparency to So is there, not necessarily part of the auditing function, but transparency to our community? When the, when Governor Walz and the Department of Education says that, or the legislature says that we're gonna give education two percent? That the community knows, in our instance, that isn't the case.
Yeah, that's a, that's a tough one because it is so variable. So the two percent is on the basic.
Right.
And that is standard for all districts. And then there's a lot of ups and downs in the rest of the calculation. So I don't remember, Kevin, how many pages the what-if calculation is, but that is what calculates your general education aid, and that would have all details. But it's probably eight pages?
Yeah.
Something like that?
But it's also different, like Nancy saying, for every district.
Yes.
The state does not give a, here's what it is, or the net for everybody across the state. But because they don't wanna get in trouble publicly because some are below and some would be above.
Right, but that's, that's what I'm saying is, is the state gives us two percent, but they don't really give us two percent.
Not in an overall perspective, no. They give you two percent on that basic formula allowance, which is a standard number. But then there are all the other variables that go into the revenue that you receive. And we'll look at revenues per student on an average basis in a, in a few slides, and that might give you a better picture of that information.
And I get it, right, cause you're looking at that sheet that I showed you back two years ago when they were, the legislators came out with the form. And we didn't get, when you came down to the bottom line with all those other revenues in there, we were below the two percent.
Yeah, like the two and a half percent, we ended up at one point seven, I think, or one point nine. On the two percent, we ended up at one point four. Well, when the community hears, hey, the state's giving two percent and two percent, or when we're negotiating two percent, two percent. We're not really getting two percent when it comes to the overall net that we're receiving.
Yeah, it's, Minnesota in particular, the, um, the revenue calculation is very complicated.
Completely understood.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, moving then to, um, some dollar amounts, starting with the budget to actual report. What you see on the far left is the original plan, um, anticipating about a two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollar increase in fund balance. That plan was modified, and your final budget anticipated just under three-hundred thousand dollars increase in fund balance. The district did outperform that budget and ended increasing fund balance by nine-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. And when we look to the far right, that's your variance column, and we follow that up to total revenues, uh, which is the first underline there. Uh, revenues were under budget about one point one percent, so really very close overall to what you were anticipating. And the large difference coming in the state sources with general education aid and special education being under the amounts you had planned in the budget. And if we look at expenditures, there were, those were under budget by a bit more than the revenues, about two point nine percent. And most of that had to do with conservative budgeting for things like salaries and benefits, supplies, repairs and maintenance, and all of those pieces. So again, overall, outperforming the budget by six-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand. The next slide takes a look at the general fund, kind of a snapshot at year-end at a very high level, looking at total revenues, total expenditures, and then the change in fund balance. And on the bottom, all the components of fund balance. So we'll look at the details of revenues and expenditures and those changes in the coming slides. Um, so keying in then to the bottom portion of this chart and taking a look at all of the components of your fund balance. Um, the key number, the most important number is gonna be that unassigned, and that's two numbers up from the bottom. And some improvement again there for fiscal '22. That number increased by about four-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand and ended at just over three-point-five million. And when we look at that, um, your policy outlines a minimum of eight percent, and you are now at nine-point-nine percent. So in compliance with that policy. But if you look at that number, just a few short years ago, two thousand nineteen, you had a hundred-and-seventy-six thousand. So some really nice improvements in that unassigned fund balance, allowing you to be in compliance with policy.
May I ask a question about that?
Yes.
So, we're at nine, nine-point-nine percent.
Mm-hmm.
What would you think, what would you say is the average school district percentage on the general?
Um, yeah, we'll get to that in a slide of the unrestricted. It's a little bit different than the unassigned, um, but this is lower than average. Yeah. All right, moving then.
Which, which affects our bond ratings and those types of things when we're.
It affects a lot of things, yeah.
When we have lower than average.
Yep.
In essence, reserve funds, ready day fund, whatever you wanna call it.
Right.
It affects, negatively affects our credit rating.
Right, right, so those improvements are something to, to celebrate right now. All right, then a little bit more on details for revenues and expenditures. Revenues overall were down about three-hundred-and-forty thousand for the year, which is point nine percent, so pretty close, um, in total to twenty-twenty-one. And state sources is where you see the largest variance, and that is your largest funding category. That makes up seventy-four percent of your total revenues. Oops, sorry, we're one more slide forward, Jeremy. There we go. I wasn't paying attention. Um, so overall, state sources down about four-hundred-and-eighty thousand related to primarily special education being lower than twenty-twenty-one. Then we have two pie charts to take a look at your expenditures. And we do have incorrect dates in the title, I apologize for that. Um, but when we look at the two pie charts, the percentage category-wise, pretty similar from year to year. And overall, expenditures up about two point nine percent or just over a million dollars. And again, salaries and benefits are your largest expenditure category, and that's where you saw the largest increase for the year. Overall percentages on direct instruction, sixty-six percent for twenty-twenty-two and sixty-five percent for twenty-twenty-one. And that is a bit above overall state averages in those three categories. Yes, the dates on the actual pie charts are correct, the title did not get updated. And I did not see that till, it was too late. All right, then looking at those revenues per ADM served, expenditures per ADM served, um, and comparing to statewide averages for Becker. So Becker is on the left side of these in the green bar, and overall state averages on the right side. And when we look at fiscal '21, which is the last year that we have comparative information, you can see that that year and each of the years prior to that, Becker is below on the revenues that you bring in on a per-student basis. Uh, and a decrease for fiscal '22 with the decrease in revenues and the decrease in students served.
So this factors in what I was talking about.
Yes, this is total general fund revenues on a per-student basis, so yes, overall below statewide averages.
We spend less per student than what the state average is.
Yes, so if you look at the next slide, that's the expenditures, and you see a very similar picture. You bring in less, you spend less per student-wise.
Is there a reason why we bring in less, the state?
A lot of different reasons.
A lot of different, okay, that's.
Yeah. Right, it's all, it also is fact too that there is so many different variables, and, you know, some of it has to do with the demographics of the students that you serve. Some of it has to do with the demographics of your area, um, and the taxes that are here and that base, and just all of that. There's so many pieces. Where are you at with long-term facility maintenance projects? You know, what is your special education population like?
My recollection is that almost all of that difference, if you go back one slide, Jeremy, in the revenue. Almost all of that difference is because the, what is it, ten-county or eleven-county metro area gets an additional amount of money per student than, than what we do here in the rest of the state.
It, yeah, there's part of it is, is some fat. But there, there are a lot of variables.
Seven hundred dollars or something like that per student, is my recollection.
I don't have details on, on that, but.
I mean.
There are definitely discrepancies.
Sorry, next, part of it in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, but you don't have the state average, was the COVID money. I mean, that was the issue, just that Jeremy tried pushing out to the state so everybody knew it, that, yeah, we weren't getting as much as a lot of districts that were like us, similar to us, it was all over the map. That's why you can have a variance of twos.
Because it was Title I.
Well, it was based upon poverty and free and reduced, and a lot of districts got a lot more.
Right. And the spending levels of that money is variable too. Some are saving it, some are spending it all. So I think that fiscal '22 in particular and going forward for the next two years, it's gonna, you're gonna see significant fluctuations in these numbers, and it's gonna be harder to compare. Yeah, so paying more attention to what's going on at Becker than, than comparing to state averages. All right, one more comparison chart that takes a look at your expenditures, again by percentage, um, and function. And comparing you to statewide averages for fiscal '21. The only one that really stands out and different is in that regular instruction category. You are spending more than average of the total on regular instruction. And again, demographics is a big driver in that. Timing of capital in your general fund is a big driver of that, all of those things. And then when we compare, um, '21 to '22 for the district, pretty similar, um, overall, but again, enough to, in that regular instruction category. All right, next slide.
Is that like salaries and that kinda stuff in the regular instruction? Is that what that is?
Yeah, it's all of your regular instruction, um, so curriculum, salaries, supplies, repairs in, in instructional areas. A lot of different things. Probably some administration, lower-level administration in the buildings, a lot of, a lot of different things. Then we have a graph that takes a look at the revenues and expenditures, and I think this highlights where you were in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, and where you are in twenty-twenty-two. So between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, the lines switched places. So the blue, which started out on the top, that's your net expenditures, and then the green is your revenues. So for those first two years, you were deficit spending, and now you've been accumulating excess revenues to add to that fund balance. And the next chart takes a look at the fund balance again, and this is a little bit different because this is unrestricted fund balance. So it's non-spendable, assigned, committed, and unassigned. And it subtracts out the restricted, uh, expenditure stream, so operating capital, long-term facility maintenance, all of those restrictions are subtracted from here. And I think this again highlights where you were and where you are headed. So ending fiscal '22 at thirteen and a half percent, which is an improvement from fiscal '21. But I would guess that that state average is going to hover right between twenty and twenty-five percent, cause that's where it's been for the last fifteen, twenty years. So you will still be below state average.
You said twenty to twenty-five percent?
Mm-hmm.
Is what the state average is?
Yeah, so for '21, it was twenty-three percent.
So the, the green.
Yeah, it's the green, sorry.
Up there.
Yeah, I, I can't read the number, but.
Yeah, that's the state average.
Yeah, that's the state average, so. And that has hovered right between twenty and twenty-five percent for, I think, almost as long as I've been looking at charts like this.
We're halfway there. We're halfway there?
There you go. Half-full, right? Um, all right, then we have two charts.
And honestly, I was thinking more along the lines of, so thirteen percent is still compared to, um, you know, the, the amount of months that we have basically of money.
Thirteen percent's like a month and a half.
Month and a half.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess maybe twenty to twenty-five is not completely out of line, but.
See, a lot of policies anywhere between seven and fifteen percent. Those are the, the, the biggest, um, most common percentages that we see in fund balance policies. For that unassigned number, so that doesn't include non, non-spendable or assigned or committed, so it's a little bit different than this.
So I'm hearing what you said about as far as state averages, but for those districts that wanna have a, a really good credit rating and show financial stability and soundness. Wha- what is the percentages of those types of districts?
I don't think there's, I don't think there's a magic number. I think adhering to policy is probably a big thing that the bond rating people are gonna look at. Um, yeah, and then just overall, where are the trends? Where are you headed? What does it look like when you do budget? You know, do the results come out like they should, like you have planned them to come out? Um, those types of things. If you were consistently over budget, that would be a concern.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's a lot, a lot of questions and a lot of variables that go into that too.
And we had some of that happening, we were consistently over budget.
So that was that line graph that you saw?
Right.
Where the green or the blue is above the green.
Yeah.
And now flip-flop, where the revenues are above the expenditures now.
Right, so some significant improvement over the last several years, three years for sure.
I mean, I understand where we end up going when you compare to an average in the state.
Mm-hmm.
What I'm, what the, my question was aimed at, what are the best districts doing? Not, not, cause let's not run to the middle, let's run to the top, let's run to what, you know, top performing districts do. That was more what I was, my question was aimed at.
Okay.
So, just so we understand that, that we're not here to be average, we're here to be much better top performing.
Mm-hmm.
And, and there's probably, as Nancy stated, it's, it's not just the fund balance.
Right.
They take a look at multiple items.
And it's hard because a very small district needs more than thirteen and a half percent to feel comfortable. Because if they have a boiler go out, or, you know, an emergency, any kind of an emergency, a flood, anything like that, they need the cash flow to be able to handle things. Um, your district is much bigger, so pure dollar-wise, you have more in your fund balance. So, it's all variable.
Do we have new buildings or old buildings?
Exactly, exactly.
Like a small district like Lester Prairie, what, I'm trying to remember what you said you had in your fund balance. It was a big number if.
Forty, forty-two percent is what we had when I left there.
It's still.
I think they went over fifty the year after.
I think it's still over fifty percent.
Two and a half million or something, I mean.
Which is a small, smaller number, but, um, bigger percentage.
Right, but you do theirs?
We do, we just started working with them this year.
Okay, yeah. Well, it's good to hear they're doing well.
Yeah, they are. All right, anything else on the general fund? Okay, then I have just two charts to take a look at your special revenue funds, starting with food service. So the operations of this fund increased substantially in twenty-twenty-two with free meals for all students, both breakfast and lunch, and the return to in-person learning for the full year. So revenues were up thirty-three and a half percent, expenditures up about twenty-four percent, just with those increases. So an increase in fund balance of seven-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand for the year and ending at a very positive, almost one-point-three million. So, um, just recommended that you take a look at that and, and any needs that are out there, um, now's the time.
And just, uh, put one asterisk on that one. Kevin, part of the referendum, we're, like any kitchen, food service-related items, we're looking at spending money from here rather than referendum money because we have the ability to use it.
And then the last slide is your community service fund. The fund traditionally has had deficit spending with some support from the general fund. That support was a much smaller amount for fiscal '22. The transfer in was only ten thousand dollars compared to the hundred thousand that you've been, uh, transferring the previous two years. So ending at positive two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand. When we look at the categories of fund balance in this fund, they are segregated by state statute. There was one, the community education did have a small deficit, about sixty-eight hundred dollars. The other three components were positive at year-end.
Are we required to move money to cover that deficit, or as long as the whole were positive? The only, the only one was the preschools, and that's that transfer.
Yep. Yep, all right.
Yeah, traditionally, community ed has been fine and has been positive, it was just the, it took a little bit of a dip this year, so. Just keeping an eye on those programs is important to make sure fees and other revenues are covering costs.
So community ed includes school readiness and that program as well, right?
The community ed fund does, the community service fund does, school readiness, ECF, the, community ed and community service are segregated as the four components, not the fund. And community ed was the one that fell below.
We're just can't follow those.
Community ed. And you'll see, she doesn't have the breakdown here. I actually have the breakdown when I go through the truth and taxation, or do you have it?
It's in the communication letters, not on this chart.
Oh, yeah, but.
I actually have it.
Okay.
Presentation too, so you'll see it later. The next presentation.
More numbers. All right, any questions at all? All right.
We need a motion to accept the auditor's report?
Yeah. I'll move to accept.
Okay.
Any other discussions, questions?
Just wanna say thanks, thank you for.
Thank you.
Doing our audit, and for the last few years, it's, you know, the finance committee and us don't have a whole lot of involvement, but I know you work pretty closely with Kevin and, and the district office, so, thank you.
Yeah, and, and I'd like to thank Kevin and his team before I go too, because they are always well-prepared for the audit, which makes our life much easier.
Well, it really is, wouldn't you agree?
I understand, it's okay.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Keep it up there somewhere.
Thank you.
There'll be another one. Thank you. Uh, next one, Kevin.
Yeah.
Truth and taxation?
Jeremy, listen to it. So what this is, is this is the truth and taxation informational, um, part of the. So what this is, is this is the truth and taxation informational part of the levy. So school districts, you know, you, the board approved a preliminary levy back in September, and then the state, you know, goes through any corrections that they have to that levy portion. But they use that preliminary levy to send out, and you probably already got all your proposed tax statements, probably maybe a week, two weeks ago, maybe. So they use that preliminary levy to send out that information. But if the state had any changes that they did to the calculations in between there, and they incorporated them into here, and then we now go through, and then we have a final certification of the proposed levy. But there's two, two things that are required, so again, just as I was talking about, counties send out those proposed property tax statements, which everybody should have gotten them here probably a week ago. And then we all have to hold hearings, the counties, cities, and schools, and townships actually, too. So that's what this is about, this presentation. Again, we present, we have to present information on the current budget that we're in for the current year and the previous year. And then it also requires us to show what that proposed tax levy is gonna be for pay twenty-three. So, and then if anybody does have comments, we do, by law, have to allow them to speak if they want to. Not on your valuation of your property, that's a county meeting in May. So we don't do valuations, so that's in May if somebody wants to do it. Okay, you can go to the next. So we have to show the previous year, and again, this is kind of what just Nancy went through. But there you'll see the last year, the general fund, the overall is the first line, and it just shows what our beginning fund balance was at July first. It shows us our revenues, expenditures, got some other financing sources uses. So our total general fund, fund balance is four million five hundred and seventy-one actually. But then you have to take off reserves that are out there by law. So we get revenues in for operating capital items, so equipment type things, that's what operating capital is used for. There you'll see, we have a seventy-seven thousand ending fund balance, and then we also have another reserve. It's called long-term facility maintenance. That's the larger maintenance types items, so roofing, fixing boilers, fixing parking lots, carpeting. It's deferred maintenance type things, so try to fix them as they come up before they cause a real problem, boiler going out or something like that. Then we also have some assigned fund balances, which are, there's assigned balances out in the buildings that have like a reserve, but they're called assigned, so they're for a specific purpose, so they're site-based. They bring revenues in from fundraisers and things, and then they spend, but there's a balance at the end of the year. And the total of those, also, this is like where our scholarships are, our Dylan's Hope Reserve, that's included in that, three hundred and thirty-three thousand. The non-spendable fund balance, that's really the prepaid and inventories at the end of the year. And so what it is, is it's set aside because it's already paid for, but it's for future expenses. So it's for this current year's expense, inventories that we're gonna use, that we had sitting there on June thirtieth, and prepaid that we already paid for. So let's look to the next slide. This, this slide gives all the funds, so the general fund, again, that's just the total. There you'll see that food service one that Nancy was pointing out, the community service, and she didn't point out the building construction fund, but that's just, so that's what we have. We issued bonds for the forty-three million nine hundred and ninety-six thousand five hundred and fifty-seven. We had expenditures through June thirtieth of three million one sixty-eight. So out of those bond proceeds at June thirtieth, at the end time, we had forty million eight point seven. You know, obviously since June, we've been paying contractors and things also, a lot of that. Then the last one is our debt service fund. It pays our principal and our interest on the bonds that we've issued, the new ones that we just did, but even the previous ones that district had. Okay, now we go into the next, the current year's budget, set up the same type of way. But you'll see, general fund, we have a variance, and again, that unassigned one is probably the most important, that eleven thousand six hundred and ninety-four. So it's saying that we're gonna have revenues of thirty-four million zero eighty-one, expenditures of thirty-four million zero sixty-nine for unassigned balance. And that, that's the eight percent, Paul, that bottom line there, that's the eight percent for the policy for the fund balance. And currently, that's at, you know, nine point eight, eight-three, I think it is. But, so, you know, we're, we're, we're over that eight percent, but, you know, not by a lot either. And I get it, it looks like a big number, but just like Mark stated earlier, it's a month and a half, you know? So. Questions on that? Then this, and you can go to the next one. This one again is just all of the funds together, of what, where our budget is for this year. And one thing that the legislature did this year, so when you got your property tax statements, your proposed property tax statements, they put in these two years' worth of information for the school districts, but they really didn't think it out, because they wanted that information by September fifteenth. Well, the auditors weren't actually done until October, about middle of October, end of October, that they were done with the audit. So we had to give them unaudited numbers for the last fiscal year. The budget part was fine, we could give them this year's budget. But when you look at that form, and the reason they were doing it is they were saying, well, then you'll, they'll know what the, the property taxpayers are gonna have. Well, we're not on a calendar year, like cities and counties, works well for them, but not for schools, because you have the July first to June thirtieth. And counties are actually gonna go back to the legislators and see and tell them, hey, this didn't work for schools, because they're not on the same calendar year as the cities and counties. Um, next. And this is kind of a little bit of what Nancy was showing also, so I showed the last years. This is where our revenues are coming from. You can see, we get about twenty percent from our property taxpayers, both years, you'll see roughly twenty percent. The majority we get from the state sources, seventy-two percent previous year, seventy-six percent this year. And then you'll see, the, the green was the federal sources. And the reason the state's going up and the federal's going down is because we don't have as much of the COVID federal grants. That was where most of the funding came from. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had more of the federal COVID money, but now it's going down, and we're gonna get back closer to just our regular federal grants that we get, not the extras. Go to the next slide, and this is a, by expenditures, by program, a little bit like Nancy's was also. But there you can see, we spend the majority on the instruction, sixty-six percent in twenty-two and sixty-eight percent in twenty-three. Student support services, that one, you'll see why that one's going down. That was where the majority of the federal grants were coded to.
What was in student support services?
It's the nursing, it's counselors, it's curriculum, transportation is in there. The, all the paras are in there, in the student supports.
So basically, everything that is in instruction?
Uh, well, there's, there's instruction in there, too, because paras are in there, curriculum is in there. And curriculum is a part of instruction, if you're talking just salaries.
Why are we just calling up there, is it?
Right.
Large part is called instruction, and then?
Well, yes, but the instruction is all of, it's all of the elementary teachers' supplies for, and activities. So that's what's in that number, okay? The student support services will have transportation, but it will have the paras in there, and then it'll have all the curriculum purchases, like you guys were talking about, the science curriculum. So that purchase will come out of that student support services coding section, okay? Does that answer the question? And then you'll see the, the maintenance, roughly same, ten, eleven percent, and then the other eight to six percent. Again, that big switch is really because of that student support, the federal dollars were mainly in that twenty-twenty-two. So when they go down, the expenses are gonna go down, too, and then instructional part will go up. If you wanna go to the next slide. Again, this is that general education funding, how it's calculated, it's that formula allowance that you actually saw on Nancy's, the six-eight-sixty-three per ADM, times the students, gives you our general ed revenue. Not all the revenue that Ryan was talking about, but just that general ed portion. Go to the next, and here's the history of that formula allowance, and that was where Nancy actually had those percentages, too. Remember over on the side, like two and a half to two percent, but these are the dollar amounts she had. That's what I'm saying, you get a little repeat here. These are our Becker student counts on October first for the past eight years. You'll see, yes, we were growing by twenty, two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five in fiscal year sixteen, all the way up to our high of twenty-nine fifty-eight in fiscal year twenty. Then COVID hit us, we dropped about a hundred and four students from fiscal year twenty down to fiscal year twenty-one. Actually took a little bit of a drop last year of, what was that, seventeen, twenty-one for last year? But this October first, we are up twenty-eight sixty-three, so we're up almost twenty-nine students on October first. Go to the next slide. So how these amounts all figured out and determined, like Nancy said, there's a levy limitation form that's thirty-eight pages long, that state does calculations for every district. But the formulas are all set in statute to determine levy limits. So the state puts a limit on how much school districts can levy their residents. Then again, Minnesota Department Ed calculates all those limits, and they give them to us based on estimates that we also give them. And then again, as you, you did in September, you approved the proposed levy, and then the final levy can't exceed that amount, except if we would have held a operating referendum in November, then it could have gone over that, but we didn't have one this year, so. Go to the next slide. And here is our proposed levy for all of the funds, so it's split apart between three, three different funds. And then you'll see last year's actual levy that you approved in the first column, the proposed that we're gonna have you be approving tonight, hopefully, if you agree with it, but that's what the proposed is. You'll see the difference. The first one in the general fund, the overall change is a four point six-seven percent increase. If you go to the next slide, Jeremy, we can go through, so that increase of four five hundred and forty-one, five-five-seven for the general fund. So we had a reemployment levy that decreased by a hundred and thirty-two thousand. We had operating referendum levies that increased, you know, due to the inflationary increase that's allowed, but also the state portion of the total, total per student allowance decreasing. So the state shares in the operating referendum. But they have not changed the calculation for the state aid portion in about twelve years. So what's happening statewide is the state is sharing less of the total per student amount in state aid, because the formula is going down, so the state's portion goes up, stays the same. It's the same dollar amount per student, but it's just where it's coming from. State portion is going down, which means to make up the difference, the levy goes up. So that's what most of that levy increases. We had a.
That's operating referendum levies piece, it's all taxpayers equally, right?
Yes, it's based upon the tax capacity.
Per acre.
Yeah, tax, well, there's different formulas for it, though. You gotta remember, so there's exclusions, there's different rates, I mean, I probably have a couple hour seminars. There, there's different rates for different properties. Okay, we'll just know that not everybody is equal, okay? Because businesses have a different rate, then homeowners have a different rate, then ag has a different rate. Apartment buildings have a different rate, those are the kind of the four main ones. So, but the county does all that calculation, okay? And then gives us a tax capacity and says, okay, school districts, how much is your levy? This is that levy. Okay, now they split it across everybody. But it's different than a city or county, where the city and a county can go, here's your value. Okay, we need this much, now we're gonna split it across. The school district can't, because in that previous slide, the state sets the limits on, on those, okay? Good questions. We have an increase in the long-term facilities maintenance of eighty-two thousand, our building lease levy decreased by twenty-three, our OPEB levy decreased, because we're gonna pay off our retirees insurance costs that are out there, and then seven other categories had a thirty-four thousand dollar increase. So total of all those was that five hundred and forty-one. But the majority of it was really from that, that operating referendum, the state's portion going down, which means the taxpayers goes up. The total revenue isn't going up a lot, it's just the, the portion that the state's going down.
So the way you're suggesting that's gonna continue to happen?
If, if, if the state doesn't change that multiplying factor, yes, that will. That's why in school districts, there's a history, about every twenty years, the state, a minute you go back, about every twenty years, the state has come in and said, oh, our property taxes are getting way too high for residents, we have to do something. State comes in and says, okay, we're gonna pay more of that, so lower the taxes. They did it with this formula when they initially set it up, but they haven't changed that base. So now everybody's values have gone up way over that base, which is how they calculate the state aid. So more districts are dropping off of that state aid, because they haven't changed that, that base valuation to be eligible to get state aid.
And so we're twelve years into the twenty-year cycle?
Yeah, we're actually probably pretty close to the twenty years. It was when Jesse Ventura is in about two thousand, two thousand and one, where, if you remember, the governor at that time said, no, we're, the state's gonna pick up more of the, the percentage. And, and the taxes went down. Well, since then, it's kind of gone the other way, the taxes are going more. And so there could be a correction here in the next five to ten years, maybe. You never know, I mean.
You go along the.
And it's not exactly twenty years, I mean, when you go back.
I'm gonna hold you to it.
The Minnesota miracle was in, what, nineteen seventy-two, so that was one of them, where that was, that was all about the state paying more. Where that was, that was all about the state paying more of the portion instead of the taxpayers. So for school.
And the whole deal with Jesse and that shift was the part that really hurt Becker was when they took the utility piece. So we can't tax utilities in the same way as we tax other businesses that are in our area.
They they took a portion of it and put it on the state.
Put it on the state.
Put it on the state's balance.
And that's what has continued for us now. You don't, I mean, nobody can really know what's going to happen over the next several years with the Sherco plant and those pieces. But I mean, the Sherco plant still, they are a taxpayer. They get hit by, what I was trying to get to was the property tax piece that the utilities pay and the business pay. Are, that's a a large portion of property taxes that we still receive. So as we see these shifts, when the property taxes, tax piece goes down, that that isn't really going to mean much for Becker, I think in particular. Because, you know, as the state picks up more of those and they try to equalize it across districts, that means that we get less because we have property taxpayers that pay that piece. So keep that in mind.
Continuing on, so community ed is the next fund, they had a small increase. It's mainly the increased population for the early childhood and then the other levies went down three thousand, three fifty-nine. For for an increase of a thousand one four. The next slide is the debt service levy, that one was actually very close. Had a small decrease in debt excess levy. That just means when we collect the taxes, if we have too much in our fund balance, the state then says, okay, if you you have enough sitting there, that you can help pay the principal and interest, so you can you can lower your your taxes that you're charging to cover that principal and interest. And then there was a small increase in some of the, there's that basements and some other levies in there. So for a seven thousand eight thirty-seven, thirty-two. So the next slide, Jeremy, again, how is it determined? Again, county assessor puts a market value on all our properties. That legislature sets those formulas for those tax capacities towards different types of properties. Just like it says residential, commercial, ag, there's a bunch of them. Then the county auditor calculates that tax capacity for every parcel based on those two. And then they take, the county auditor takes our total dollar amount that we can do and they calculate a rate out of that for four. And then that's how they calculate how much they send out on the proposed property tax statements. Who can you talk to if you need answers? If it's specifically about the district, then call me. Again, if it's a property value question, that's Sherburne County Assessor's office, they're the ones that create the values. Next slide, that is it. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Okay, and then you would need.
Yep, so hearing no, no questions and and being able to move forward now that we've had our meeting, we need a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three levy.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Kevin. All right, item number ten, first readings. Jeremy, if there's anyone you want to highlight here?
So I've got my notes on there, so just some policies that that come up when I was creating the orientation packet for the new board members, some of those two hundred level ones in there. One of them that you may want to look at is the two twenty-three where there are some minor recommended changes. So typically those were the district goals that we had made in the past, but now with the strategic plan, which is what that policy is titled. My recommendation is to put this strategic plan, reference it in there, and then we always know we have the strategic plan that's going to be public and on our website and things, so.
It allows you to change this strategic plan and those pieces without having to do a policy change?
Correct, yep. And then five thirty-four was brought to the table, but we don't have, there's no changes to it, I just want to bring that one forward. So if you saw the news a week or two ago, the Attorney General had made a decision on what lunch naming is, where if somebody were to go through line and not have money in their account, well, we can't serve them a separate, different type of lunch, and they're still entitled to that lunch. We don't do that, we've never, we haven't done that, I guess, for the last few years anyway. And so there are no changes to that policy, but I just wanted that one, just to be out there for the public to see.
We do have that piece there though, that talks about a negative fund balance that they can't, because there's snacks and additional things.
Yeah, there's there's the regular lunch line and then there's the à la carte, so you're not entitled to the à la carte ones, which we can do. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And we have free breakfast this year, so that that's not included in this either, so. My guess is that Attorney General opinion is going to end up being a part of a platform for maybe getting that, bringing back, I guess, the free lunches for kids. I think that's one of the governor's initiatives, I guess, I've heard, I don't know if it'll happen, but I think that's a good thing, I don't know.
Well, it's.
My opinion.
The reason I bring that up, Jeremy, is because I have heard in the past that we would make somebody, if they'd taken something from the à la carte, that they would have to put that back. And that seems like kind of some of the same stuff, so I don't know if there's pieces we can do in.
We tried to catch it beforehand.
I get it, yeah.
But we don't always, or we haven't always, I I'm aware of those instances too, and we've had discussions with that too. But sometimes we have a sub and a kid will sneak in there and grab the chips or whatever they can get out of there. But yeah, we can pull those ones back because those are, that's above and beyond what kids are entitled to, and we're not getting reimbursed.
Not a part of the federal lunch program, à la carte items.
Right, I understand. Um, I do see that there's some amounts that we need to put in there, it looks like, on three B. Sorry, I didn't catch it ahead of time.
In five thirty-four.
Yep, the the red line one. The the three B and the four C.
Those should be already in our our current policy. Three B and four C.
Yeah, the red line has some.
Yeah, we fill those already with with ours, so that's MSBA red line, that just shows a blank for those.
So we're not changing our policy, you just put the MSBA there for a comparison?
Yep, yep.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, so those are first readings, again, that's for information. Allow a public comment period between now and when those policies get adopted. And again, if you have changes to those, they should either go, they should go through the superintendent to the policy committee. Okay. All right. That is item number ten, we move on to item number eleven, which is a second reading or discussion on policy seven twenty-two, is the only item that's there.
So I want to make a motion that we do not approve the MSBA policy seven twenty-two.
Okay, I I understand your motion, but I mean, we actually need a positive motion to adopt it. So if there's no motion to to adopt it, that by default would be the way that we would go. Yeah, I I mean, you can take a motion to table this item, if you so desire, or we can have the discussion on. I mean, I'm assuming that you didn't actually receive any any changes or comments?
That's correct.
So the, I'm I'm struggling with why we would.
Well, I know you don't want discussion until we have a motion on the table.
So I'll I'll make a motion to start the discussion.
Okay, and I'll second it. Let's go ahead and move forward, so let's let's talk about the, that that policy.
Yep, so I, all the other policies that we go through, and we already have a seven twenty-two, are done where you where you make the changes and you bring them as a first reading. This is completely changing the policy and not going with the original, that's my, what I have a problem with.
So I'm just going to paraphrase it so I understand. So what I hear you saying is that we have a current policy seven twenty-two, this is, is a, would be a change to that. We've not been presented with a red line or differences between that one and this one.
Absolutely.
Okay. I I hear that, and that sounds like a problem.
Yeah, I I know that the policy committee was supposed to meet on on this. And honestly, between the time that this was brought up, between, you know, this first reading, it was a shortened period between the two times plus with the holiday brought in. There's just certain things on this, on the MSBA policy that I just can't wrap my head. I I just, there's, there's just a lot of different things, there's no resolution steps in it. I think our policy is is better, can change as be made to it, absolutely, but we'd be taking, there's just, again, what the, trying to get my words right here with this. The resolution part, I think, is huge, I think that's important for us as a district to have some form of a resolution, otherwise these things could potentially go on forever. I've got a problem with the costing on it, I mean, with, whether it be printed copies, why we're printing copies on this stuff is is a complete mystery to me. We shouldn't be printing seven, eight, nine hundred copies of anything on this. Are we supposed to be giving requesters a quote on this before any work is done? And then what's that based on? I mean, a lot of the things that we're printing out probably aren't valued at what the requester wants anyway. So how do we determine, you know, how do we determine cost if we, if a lot of the stuff isn't valued or the person's not going to request it? So, and again, and we've got to do something on this inspection process. What we're doing now, where we have somebody come in, take a day off of work, to come in and sit in an office and go through an iPad and scroll through it and take a picture with their phone, is just ludicrous to me, in my opinion. I mean, we put a man on the moon, you know, fifty years ago. I mean, why can't we, why can't we have a, you know, where this, the data is available, it's big screen, and we can provide them with some sort of digital copy? Here's my question.
I I just want to, I'm trying to clarify so I understand, I, because what you're talking about is what's happening under the current seven twenty-two policy. And I think what you're saying is this does nothing to resolve any of those issues, it does nothing to fix the problems of of what we had. And so we're, we had brought this seven twenty-two as the MSBA model, and what they've gone through it was to try to bring some clarity and resolution. We've done none of that with these changes, so why would we change from what we have?
Well, I don't, well, right, I agree, I don't, I I see, yes, we need changes, but at least what we have now has at least some footing that we can work through. MSBA policy doesn't have a lot of that stuff, it's it's more vague in my opinion, with the costing, with the inspection policy, the way we go through inspections, with how we come up with pricing, how we're going to, you know, charge residents or who's data requesters, that's my, that's my issue with it. I think we can do better, I think the district can do better.
Those are, those are all through the statute. You don't need a policy even to have, make those decisions. Inspection is different than copying costs. The data practice office is available for for questions related to the statute. They sometimes won't answer my questions because of this policy, because it it doesn't say the same things or it doesn't necessarily align with the statute in some ways. So it makes it a little bit trickier for some of that stuff. Like you were asking the questions, how do you get a quote for for data? Well, it depends, so if you get printed copies, the first one hundred are twenty-five cents each, which is listed in statute and I think it's in the current policy that we have. For digital copies, it's the total search and retrieval cost that's associated with that data request. So whatever that costs us to search and retrieve, not redact, but to search and retrieve for that, if it's over one hundred, otherwise it's twenty-five cents for the first one hundred. But again, those things are listed in the in the statute and don't necessarily have to be listed in the policy. Some of the concerns I do have with the current policy is there's some things that are just impossible that are in there. We've had discussions with that before. Things like segregating data, public and private data, we just don't know how to do that, and nobody knows how to do that. And requesters have asked for that, and I've asked them to find somebody that can do that, and no one can do that. Recommendations for for an audit of that policy, no one, I cannot find anyone to do that. So that makes, we're essentially violating our own policy in that way. There's significant financial liability due to the resolutions that you were talking about. That's, it's listed in there, it's all on the cost of the district. If somewhere were to appeal, the district will assume those costs. That's in that policy, so that's a big liability for the district. And so so those are some of the concerns that I do have with that current policy. The statute really tells you what you have to do, the data practices office and their advisory opinions also tell us how they've solved some of the issues that have come up. They will be the first ones to tell you that that policy is old and not not up to date and that digital copies are are causing them issues. And so, so I I don't know what what the solution is to that, I guess we can push back with MSBA, but yeah. I I wrote down three options, one of them was to keep the current policy in seven twenty-two, and you just heard my concerns on that. Adopt model policy seven twenty-two from MSBA, which was my recommendation. And then create a new policy that incorporates the wants and needs of the district and the requesters. I don't know which one you'd start with, with MSBA or this current one. That could be, the issues I have with that are, the legal review would need to be taken place on that. We already have a policy that MSBA is vetted and taken care of with all that stuff, and we pay for that service. And it could take considerable more time while we have this current seven twenty-two that's sitting there, causing a liability to the district in my mind.
So what, are there, and and I'm talking kind of generically as far as policies. Districts modify MSBA policies all the time, correct?
Sure.
So I guess you mentioned three areas that seven twenty-two could be modified. I think there's a majority of this board that, given what we've gone through in the last number of data requests in the last six months, would probably acquiesce that some of that stuff is probably valid and be, and could be modified. But why do we have to start at ground zero? Why can't we just use option three and redline the current seven twenty-two and fix it rather? I mean, no disrespect, it's, this seems like a rescission backdoored. That's my personal opinion.
And and I'll tell you, so Ryan, one of the things I I invite Jeremy on, and we talked about during the first reading, is we had the current seven twenty-two and the model sitting next to each other. I said, no, we're not rescinding anything, that that policy stays in the place until we make a change to that policy. And I think maybe we could have taken this and compared it and done a redline to the current seven twenty-two to bring it somewhat closer to the model. I think, because there, through the drafting, there's seven twenty-two language in this. I know if you compare the seven twenty-two, there's a lot of MSBA in there. That's why I guess it's frustrating that we're starting at MSBA when we have a lot of MSBA in there. And we put tweaks in there that we thought at the time was needed at the time. We've gone through the process, we all agree that it can, the the policy can be modified. So let's, let's get to, I, through discussion, I don't know if we, if I have to amend my motion based on the discussion. I would, I would make, I would amend my motion to go with Jeremy's option three. And whether that also entails having a work session where there's a discussion. and whether that also entails having a work session where there's a discussion, that, that's where I would like to see it. So, so I'll put in, in the words of Robert Stroos, 'cause I just have it like that.
No, that, that's fine, 'cause I didn't know exactly how it.
So, the motion is to recommit, which means it, it sends it to the Policy Committee with some specific directions. Okay, so you recommit with specific directions and that is that we would start with the current seven twenty-two and modify that with Jer, with some of Jeremy's recommendations.
And the, the caveat that I would ask, and the board can have their input, given that there's been people that have gone through the process, both from the community side and us inside, having, I think Summer would be integral to that discussion and some of the community members that have had data requests, so we can get input on that side of the table as well, so we can mold this policy that benefits both the community and the district and is both, in, totes the law, enforceable, and we're not in violation of our policy.
So, I, 'cause I would add to, to this, because I've looked at it, had discussions, um, and forwarded the information to both Jeremy and Summer with regard to the use of artificial intelligence and, and software programs that would help with both redaction and searches to be able to find the information, um, and so passing that on as well. I think it, it does bear some, you know, some work in recommitting this. Um, I would put the, the caveat on that and, and it was, was one of the reasons that we're coming to item twelve, that we, we'll set some committee dates for these things, is we can't allow ourselves, and I've heard a lot from the community about, "Why is this being delayed? Why don't we have this committee meeting? Why don't we have these things? Why aren't they scheduled?" All of those types of things have been under a lot of pressure to do so and that's why the discussion with Jeremy about setting committee meeting days, because those are public meetings to allow the public input for all of these policies that we're talking about. Okay? And so, with your motion to recommit, I'll second that. Is there any other discussion on putting that back to the Policy Committee?
I would just like to ask, uh, Ryan, Tony, and Mark, 'cause you guys have been longtime members, how many times have we ever taken MSBA policy and changed it in your tenure here?
We've done small tweaks to maybe not even a handful of them. Yeah.
I mean, we've almost fallen back on MSBA. This is, MSBA, this is tried through. This is why we go with MSBA, because they've done the research.
They've done the research, they have the lawyers that have done it. I, I hear what you're saying.
So, just keep that in mind as this heads back that although there's some things you might disagree with the MSBA policy, ninety-five percent of our policies are MSBA-written and we've adopted every one of them with very minor little changes.
And, and I can, I can respect that and accept that, but having been, hearing the community on the other side of that argument, we're better than the MSBA policy as it sits.
I'd like to know just what concerns from the community or people who have made data requests we're trying to fix with, with these policies. So then, as we're doing that and moving forward, I'd like to know those things so we can, we can alleviate those. 'Cause maybe the, the current policy as it sits doesn't do any of that. 'Cause if they're still complaining, we're following seven twenty-two.
That, that's what I was trying to say was what he was saying.
Well, I think, I think part of that was the time that it takes, the, the technology that's involved and, and being able to.
Which a lot of that is, we've come a long way in the last.
Yeah.
Eight weeks.
Uh, again.
About the policy making those improvements, that Summer and our team and, and things making those improvements. There's no time limit in the policy. There's no time limit in the statute. It's reasonable, I guess, is the time limit, so it's reasonable, but.
Well, time limits could be added to the policy.
They could, but they really put you in a crunch, 'cause what if somebody requests every single email that's ever been sent at Becker Public Schools and you have fifteen days to get those together?
Policy could set you free on that as well, saying, "Hey, if you're requesting this, here's the."
Yeah, I don't know if you'd be able to pick and choose, 'cause there's so many different requests that could come in. It, it really creates a, what comes to him if you, you tie your hands with things that are not in the statute.
I, I think, I mean, to, to answer Aaron's question in that piece about the MSBA, I honestly believe that this is one area where both statute and MSBA is not in current practice. They, they don't understand the digital world very well in these policies and these are some of the reasons and, and they're getting challenged at many districts, right? And many districts are kind of facing these things and I think this is, again, an area that can be worked towards improvements.
And at the time that this was brought, the MSBA policy didn't fit what was going on at that time back in February, March. So, we needed something that had a little bit more than what, MSBA really didn't talk a whole lot about data practice or.
We didn't have the policy.
No, I know, but that's why we brought it, is because we were having issues. So, I, I'm just saying, it came to be because we did one and MSBA didn't have a real good guidance on it. So, that's why I'm saying, why can't we, this was adopted back in March or April, whatever. Why can't we do the redline like we do with every other policy?
Yeah.
It's my only concern.
You know, Ryan, uh, you know, you and I individually have had a discussion about, you know, why did this come back up? And I, again, from a, from a community standpoint, from the superintendent's standpoint, like, we've continued to say we have problems here that we need to resolve. And it, it never came back to the board. And so, as I stated back to you, any board member, including the superintendent, can ask to have things put on the agenda so that we continue to move things forward. Every committee that belongs in this district answers to the board. And if the board feels like things aren't, and board, individual board members feel like things aren't moving to, uh, forward in a next, in, in a timely manner, we have an obligation to come back to the board table and have that discussion. Okay, that's why we're having all this discussion in these pieces. So, with that, one of the pieces that we have to do is say, do we put a time certain on when this committee has to get back to the board on this policy?
I, I would, do I, in my recommit motion, or since there.
You can put a time period on it.
I would say within sixty days, so the February board meeting, there is action or, bec, and the reason I put that there is, is that gives two new board members that are coming to the table a chance for their input on this process.
Okay. So, the motion to recommit includes that February board meeting date, that it has to be delivered back to the board? Okay.
From the Policy Committee.
Yeah. From the Policy Committee or it comes back to the board without a recommendation from the Policy Committee and you need to take that action up?
I guess, just a couple of comments on there, um, maybe to the Policy Committee, a request when they're looking at that is, um, one, the aspect that Jeremy pointed out where the, there's some liability concerns for the district. I think we really need to address that. That's concerning. Um, I think there's also aspects of the current policy where it's saying we have to segregate our data between public and private, that is gonna be difficult and not impossible to do. So, we need to look at how that's worded to make sure we're not putting ourselves in a position where we can't. Follow the policy.
And, and keep in mind, that's where you bear a lot of the cost on redaction, because redaction is you separating that private data from the public information. That's how segregation gets done, but that is at considerable cost when it's not actually separated.
Yeah, and it's just, I don't know of anyone, public or private, that has a way of segregating emails and making them public or private. So, it seems like we're putting a pretty high standard on our district.
Wow.
And it's one that we probably can't meet. On the flip side of that, the model policy, and I think it's.
Doesn't go far enough.
It doesn't go far enough, the idea that it says in there you can charge twenty-five cents per copy, then it doesn't. If you read it closely, it says pay per copy, but it can be really easily interpreted, interpreted to be copy. We should have something in there specifically that calls out. The school, if you wanted a school district provided thumb drive or data storage device, you gotta pay for the cost of this storage device and then boom, you get it. There's, I mean, that's, uh, and also to Jeremy's point, if it's a large request, hey, you gotta pay for the time to find it and redact it. Yes, I just wanted to, I think there's been on both sides, but there's definitely changes that have been made to the current one and the model policy is inadequate.
Yeah.
Do we, we want a legal review within that sixty days as well?
I think when the, I think when the revisions are made, I think that would be a, a good idea. And maybe invite our law firm to that meeting to discuss, you know, and get feedback before I even make the changes. You know, make them upfront or make them after.
Or present a draft to them.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say, obviously, it's your guys' decision. Um, it's always one of those careful things. If a law firm is telling you, "Here's the problems," that is a liability. Keep that in mind.
So, would we, if we're gonna have the law firm do it, I would guess they'll ask for some type of motion by the board, like they've done previously. If Ryan could add that to his motion.
My, all, all of them mentioned.
Your motion is.
I, I think I'm on my fourth one, so.
So, I'll, I'll state it. The motion is to recommit policy seven twenty-two to the Policy Committee with the directions provided by the, the board here that we've, that Louis outlined. Come back to the board by the February regular board meeting and that the Policy Committee would have the appropriate legal reviews done for the superintendent if the Policy Committee doesn't take those actions and available for the board at that February board, regular board meeting.
Yeah. I'll second it.
Yeah. Okay. Other discussions?
Do you wanna repeat that one more time?
No.
I know Angel's in here, but, uh, so Ryan made that motion, Troy seconded?
Correct.
All right. Got it clear, sorry.
And you can listen to the recording to have me, if, if you need, as many times as you need to, to get, get it all written.
I just wanna make sure it was those two.
Yeah. Other discussion on the, on the item in motion to recommit? All right, all in favor of the motion to recommit, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. We're on to item number thirteen, uh, twelve, committee meeting dates?
Uh, so we've put those together, um, just mostly at, right now, as an in, information uh, for new board members and for current, for remaining board members. Uh, those are the committee dates. We'll select committees, uh, at the January first, Monday and January board meeting and those will be there, uh, if you could find the ones that work with your schedule and things like that. We also wanna post these, um, and we're gonna post them up on the door and we'll put them on our website as well, so then people can know when we're supposed to meet. Um, it doesn't mean we have to meet every single one of those times. We can cancel a meeting, but we don't wanna have to sit around the board table and try to figure out when we're gonna schedule our next meeting, uh, so that, that will allow us to do that, so. So, it's, right now, they're just for information.
Jeremy, can you also, I mean, we have Angel include on the board book, like, the committee assignments? Because we have.
Next month, yeah.
Yeah. So, when we come to the meeting next week, we, I mean, next month, we're aware of what the openings are and where everybody's at.
Yep. Yeah. And so, that, you know, I'll, I'll rem, remind everybody, the people sitting here that will be continuing on the board and our other two new board members. I mean, all of those committee assignments are assigned at the organizational meeting. So, there is no requirement for people that have been on committees to retain those committees. There's no requirement for any of those. Um, generally, we've tried to divide work equally and so committees that intend, that, that will be meeting, like negotiations committees for certified staff and all of those types of things, um, that, that work is divided. Um, keep in mind, there's some people that might not fit on some committees because of what their current work is and that kind of stuff, so, uh, keep that in mind. There, there might be people that fit well on certain committees, um, because of their current work. Like curriculum.
Or co-op.
Uh, 'cause that, that was actually, or the, the special ed co-op.
Special ed. We'll have to check on that, though, because it's, probably is in that same group as those staff members. I wonder if he can not be on there? Just, oh, that's an aside, but some of the things.
That's what I'm saying, is that there might be some con, conflicts. Um, one of the things I was gonna say is, I, I know in particular curriculum committee, that seems like a really long time to wait until the beginning of May to have their next meeting. So, we might add at, at least one more here. We've, I, I thought we traditionally met in February or around that timeframe and we talked about it briefly at the, the curriculum committee meeting.
All right.
That there might be an opportunity there, uh, particularly as the science curriculum has been reviewed, that, uh, we would have another curriculum committee meeting in, in that timeframe. Okay? But the rest of these, um, so I, but I don't particularly see any policy committee meeting.
Oh, I don't know when.
Okay. So, again, I, I would, can't tell you guys, but I would recommend that potentially you have some meeting dates set in twenty twenty-three and if you don't have anything to meet on, just don't have the meeting. Right? It's kind of the same thing, the activities has always been predicated on, we schedule all the meetings out for the whole year and then if there's nothing to act on, we just simply don't have the meeting. So, that would be my recommendation, that you would put, put all the committees on here.
Yep.
With some meeting dates. Schedule committee dates. All right? We are on item number thirteen, so the January organizational meeting date is, and just take a motion.
A motion that we move January date to January ninth.
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have.
Speak to that real quick?
Yeah.
So, for those of you that are new, there'll be four of us new. Um, the very first thing we do when we come to that meeting, we call it to order and then we start assignments of chair, vice chair, before the meeting moves on. That's all put in place. So, that'll be the very first motion.
Okay.
Come prepared.
Come prepared.
Yeah. To vote for officers.
And I'll send out some information, I don't know, I suppose, the end of December. MSBA will send it to me and then I'll forward that on to you, how, how that process works too, so.
And Aaron and I, the first year that we came on board, the vote for chair was three to three. So, it took us a while to figure that out and be able to move on. Um, statute and the, the organizational pieces do allow you to move on to the other officers first if there's less controversial type things, that kind of stuff. I don't anticipate that, I'm just telling you what has happened in the past and there is allowances for you to move on to the next ones, so that you can have somebody to run the meeting.
Well, I can honestly say the last four years have been unanimous, I think.
Pretty much so.
I don't think we've had controversy for the officers.
No. But, yeah, that first year when it was three to three.
Yep.
You gotta have the experience, I guess. All right, anything else? No. All right, uh, item number fourteen is, uh, the awarding of bids.
And this is, uh, the rebid, because there was only one bid that came in when we bid it the first time. Uh, and so this was a rebid out there. Um, sorry to come in to approval of this bid.
I'll move to accept.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to award the bid, as outlined in the, in the board packet. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Go for a second. Before we close the meeting, I would just like to say thanks, Ryan and Mark, for your years of service on the board. Mark, it's been an honor. Twelve years we came in together, it's been an honor to work side by side with you.
Thanks.
Ryan, it's been a, for four years, having at the table with your insight and your questions and I wish you guys.
Appreciate it.
Good luck in your future endeavors and thanks for your service to Becker Schools.
Thank you.
Anything else you wanna say?
It's been a wild ride.
It's been a, it's been a good experience for the, for the most part. Um, sometimes in the last year, it's been a little tough. Um, appreciate the new people coming on and asking questions. Ryan is, and Tony, both, uh, you know, challenging questions and making sure that we're, um... we're running on what we're supposed to be doing. Um, and you guys will have some challenges ahead of you, uh, over the next several years as we can, you know, kind of move through the building project, and, you know, whether or not you're gonna have enough money to do all the things that we intended on doing, um, and those types of things. So, and I'm sure Ryan and I will keep watching from the sidelines. And, yeah.
Better view from the outside.
And, and as always, um, you know, if the community has questions, if you guys have questions, um, you know, glad to help, whatever we can do, um, to continue to contribute to the excellence of, of Becker Schools.
I appreciate both of you guys' help, and I'm sure Charlie would say the same thing, just general guidance and mentorship and getting us up to speed as quickly as you can. I, I know we both have still a long way to go and learn, but you guys have been fantastic, so thank you both for your service.
Do know what he said. Did we have your cell phone numbers?
Ryan, enough feedback.
Of course. All right, anything else for the good of the district? We are adjourned.